And for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on July 11, 2023 at 12:21 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Councillors absent, Councillors Watsonfelt, Council President Stott presided. Councillor Varela moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries? And I request that everyone please rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councillor Hathworth.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the right of the United States of America, in the great public which stands on our nation under our invisible, holy justice.
We will now go into the public testimony portion of this evening. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes in totality. Public testimony is not a public hearing or a question and answer period. Sign up must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting, and you can sign up either online using the link in the agenda or via the roster in the Clerk's office, both no later than 6:30 PM on the date of the meeting. We have six people that have signed up this evening. If you could limit your comments to about two, two and a half minutes, that would be great, so we can hit that 15-minute timeline. I will call on those that have signed up to speak in person first, and we have one that will be providing comments via Zoom. First, for public input, I have Lori Stewart.
Hi, my name is Lori Stewart. I live at 7 Barnes Road, and I'm the new Neighborhood Stability Coordinator for the City of Salem. I've been asked by Mayor Pangalo to give you some background about a resolution that is before you tonight. To give you a little bit of input of what my job is like, I work with Salem residents to preserve their housing stability and to avoid involuntary displacement. I have been doing this work locally, but I have long known that policy or lack of policy at the state level directly impacts Salem residents, which is why this resolution in support of access to counsel and eviction ceiling is before you tonight. I have some background for you. We all know that we are experiencing a housing crisis, which has been made much worse by COVID-19. Evictions have now surpassed pre-pandemic levels. Evictions are complicated, they're fast-moving, and have dire consequences. Tenants facing eviction are overwhelmingly poor, female, and people of color. Most tenants are unaware of their rights and legal protections, both in and out of the courtroom. Evictions lead to homelessness, housing instability, overcrowding, displacement, and disruption of schooling for children, all of which are associated with negative health outcomes. The threat of eviction causes increased anxiety and depression. Further, Massachusetts' evictions have been shown to lead into ongoing repeated evictions, ultimately chronic homelessness, which is in turn directly linked to high costs of morbidity and premature death. Eviction leaves a permanent mark on an affected individual's record and everyone who is named in the eviction proceedings. These eviction records are publicly available. They've been available since 2013 and are being used as a screening tool to stop people from finding new homes. Evictions, most tenants in the Commonwealth, 96% of them, have no legal representative when 90% of landlords have legal representation. Access to counsel will provide legal representation for low-income tenants and low-income owner occupants in eviction proceedings. There is a network of legal aid agencies, but there is more demand than aid available. Since 1988, over a million such eviction cases have been filed in Massachusetts, and once filed, they become part of a tenant's eviction record documenting the history of whether or not they've sued a landlord or if they've been sued by the landlord. It doesn't matter what the outcome is or if there was a clerical error. That's a permanent record right now, and it is affecting people. The Boston Bar Association found that providing full legal representation in eviction proceedings, the Commonwealth ultimately saves on costs associated with homelessness, including emergency assistance, shelter, healthcare, foster care. Specifically in their report, full legal representation in eviction cases would cost the Commonwealth $26 million, while the cost savings associated with such representation are estimated to be $63 million. For every dollar spent on full legal representation in eviction cases, the Commonwealth saves approximately $2.40 on the direct costs associated with homelessness.
Lori, I'm sorry to interrupt. Well, we do appreciate your comments. We have hit up the three-minute.
Okay. I just want to say thank you for your time, and I urge you to vote in favor of this resolution.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them. Next up on the list, we have Justin Woodyer.
Thank you very much, Justin Woodyer. I'm President de Fesna, but I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I live at 10 River Street. I wasn't planning on saying this, but I just have to add that I'm fully in support of tenants having representation when it comes to eviction, but I want to share my own experience. When I was a young man, my father, who always rented to people at a low rent and did everything he could for people, rented to some people that, who were down on their luck, and there were two floors, upstairs and down. They got into a fight with each other and expected him to side with one or the other. He didn't, so they both decided to stop paying rent. And he wound up having to take them to court on this because month after month went by of no rent. The judge ordered, after hearing all the evidence, that back rent be paid. Not only did he not get any back rent, but when they moved out, they stole thousands of dollars' worth of valuable tools from that house. So I'm fully in support of tenants, and I know that the hardships that people who don't earn a lot of money can face in moving out. But I have to put in just a word for the hard-working people who own property. There are two sides to that coin. Anyway, I wasn't planning on speaking that tonight. What I wanted to say was that in your discussion of wage theft, which is very important, I hope that there will be room for you to explore the issue of delivery drivers in Salem, because I have heard from people that a portion of their tips is being taken by their employers. This is illegal, and in fact, I know that some restaurants charge a delivery fee. Now, that delivery fee, according to the AG in Massachusetts, is meant to go to the delivery drivers themselves, and if it's not, that's illegal. So I hope there'll be some room in there for you to explore that and maybe a resolution or a statement from the City Council, just reminding restaurants that that is the fact, because it cheats both the driver and it cheats the customer. It's a hidden upcharge on the customer, and it robs from the worker. And then finally, in terms of our parks, this is something that should be raised with our Parks and Rec Commission as well. But mowing, now, I walk at Leslie's Retreat Park just about every day and pick up a lot of trash, but the mowing that goes on there mows every bit of everything, and if we could set aside a third of these parks, maybe even a half, to not mow, I don't mean just for May, but for the majority of the season, we would allow our wildflowers to grow. That supports our pollinators, our insects, that supports our birds, that supports the environment in general, not to mention being beautiful. I will send some pictures to the council, pictures that you can see showing what has been mowed versus not being mowed, and the difference is incredible. And this would also save the city money, because you could cut the amount of parkland that needs to be mowed, and so the contractors would be doing less. It would be good for the environment, it would be good for our bottom line, and it would be aesthetically enjoyable. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Next up, those that signed up online, another Justin, Justin Answeich. I'm sorry if I butchered that. Please state your name for the record, if you'd like your name and address, if you'd like it recorded in the record.
My name is Justin Answeich. I live at 451 Eastern Avenue in Lynn, the neighboring town. I'm a representative of the Carpenters Union, as well as the North Shore Labor Council, and I serve as chairman of the Wage Theft Advisory Committee in the City of Lynn. So my expertise is in, well, first of all, thank you, City Council staff and residents, for coming out, and for my expertise, it's in the construction industry, but I find when I talk about wage theft, it's easier to do something more relatable, and I like to talk about the restaurant industry, because there's been a lot of high-profile cases that have come up recently in the news, and they follow that restaurant industry. And there've been reports that what's been going on has risen to the level of labor trafficking, employees coerced or threatened into forced labor. My comments will focus on the reporting of the news, institutional research, and publicly-available information. I believe this highlights the need for this ordinance and the good work that it'll do for working people in Salem. Violation of workers' rights is an intrusive and hidden in plain sight, including the simple right of being fully paid for one's work. The system for enforcing these rights is in crisis. Funding and staffing for labor standards and enforcement agencies is grossly insufficient. If, for example, on the federal level, Carlos Matos, the Department of Labor's Wage and Hour District Director for the Boston Office, has 16 investigators to research and respond to labor complaints among all industries in the state. For reference, there are more than 16,000 eating and drinking establishments in the state, a ratio of 1 to 1,000 just for restaurants, no other businesses included. Research puts estimates conservatively, with just one form of wage theft, which is paying less than the minimum wage, robs working people of over $15 billion each year federally. At the state level, in the 2022 Labor Day report by the Attorney General, it showed that just in minimum wage violations alone in the hospitality industry, it amounted to $950,000 in penalties and restitutions to 1,500 workers. That is one industry focusing on one violation with very limited resources, and it assuredly did not catch all instances. Amy Farrell, the director of the School of Criminology and Criminal Justice at Northeastern University's research that her team has conducted, found that in all labor trafficking cases that they were researching, there was a trail of wage and hour violations and wage theft that led up until it turned into instances of labor trafficking. Stopping wage theft will have direct impact on escalating abuses. Quality of services should be the deciding factor of success, not who's the most willing to harm and exploit their workers. I applaud the efforts in Salem, their work here to put it under the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Division of the city. As studies have shown time and time again, women, workers of color, immigrants, workers with disabilities, and low-wage workers are especially vulnerable to wage theft and workplace abuses. I wholeheartedly support the efforts of the City of Salem on taking the stance against wage theft and protecting working people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Now, we're right at the bell. Next up, we have Youssef Abdallah.
(Inaudible)
Oh, thank you. Name and address, if you'd like it recorded in the record.
All right. Youssef Abdallah, Director of the North Shore Labor Council, resident of Boston, 60 West Full Street. So thank you all so much for having us here today. Thank you for considering the wage theft ordinance and the many conversations you've had with us. Justin gave a great speech, so just to throw some more numbers at you. In Massachusetts, in 2021 alone, we saw $1 billion in wage theft in Massachusetts. We know this is an epidemic. We have laws on the books to penalize this and to fight against this, but right now we only see the AG really taking this on. So last year, oh, two years ago in 2021, the AG was able to recover $12.3 million. It seems nice, in comparison to that $1 billion that's actually stolen, that's only 2% of wages claimed. She works hard. The entire staff works hard. They can't do it alone. We need the cities to step up, and we need ordinances like this in action to protect our workers. Now, Massachusetts, as we all know, is going through a severe housing affordability crisis, childcare crisis, just a crisis of money. When wages are stolen, it's a human rights issue. When your overtime is taken away from you, that's the difference between affording childcare, affording rent, affording that monthly payment on the car. This ordinance is us stepping up for our workers, stepping up for our immigrant, stepping up for our single mothers, just stepping up for our community. Now, we have some more speeches coming up. If you have any questions, I would love to talk to you about it separately. I know Councillor Cohen's been talking about a lot. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate them. Next up, we have Rosimares Nied. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record.
Rosimares Nied, 29 in Rebel Terrace, Salem. Hi, everyone. I'm Salem Airey. My name is Rosimares Nied. I'm Salem, constituent in Ward 7, and I'm here tonight to ask for support in passing anti-wage theft ordinance. For many low-wage and part-time jobs, wage theft is a persistent aspect in the working lives. As an immigrant, I would like to ask you all for the support in behalf of the immigration population here in Salem, because companies are very prone to cheating wages for immigrants, and Latinos are twice as likely to earn below the minimum wage. It emphasizes the need for regulation and address the wages injustice. It's common in our government, like Justin Airey say, restaurante and building industry are very, very, and very, very inclined to not pay their works overtime or pay less than minimum wage or not pay the works at all. So I understand that this ordinance is not, cannot, don't go resolve all the problems works face about regarding rightful wages, but this can help a lot, and it can help works get the wages and benefits they earn, and can be the first step to fight against this crime. We must help protect the vulnerable people here in Salem. And as elected official, you can support and ensure works protection by helping passing this ordinance, implementing works protection, and please protect our works' wage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. And then last, we have Judith Riley, who is joining us from Zoom. If you are there, we will allow you to speak.
Thank you very much. This is Judith Riley, 20 West Avenue. I came here tonight to speak about the resolution in support of the access to counsel in eviction cases and eviction ceiling appeals resolution, but I just want to say first what a pleasure it was to hear the people who spoke before me, and I really thank the council for the opportunity to have this public comment, which was just so educational and pleasant to hear. As a former tenant and also a former landlord, I would really urge you to pass the resolution for many of the reasons that Lori Stewart talked about. I'm especially concerned, well, I'm concerned about everybody, but hearing that elderly women are especially affected by eviction and women with children and people of color, those are all really concerning, and I'm hoping that you will support our State House elected officials by passing that resolution in support of the bills that they are working on. I just wanted to say that I also hope that you go forward and work on that wage theft ordinance, because that also sounds very important to bringing about the kind of city we'd like to have. And that's it for me. Thank you very much for all the work you do, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. And that concludes our public testimony portion. For hearings this evening, we have none. Appointments and reappointments.
Held from the last meeting, the mayor's appointment of the following to the Bicycling and Shared Path Advisory Committee, Dr. Charles Heaps and Mr. Joshua Nagel.
Councillor Hathworth.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to move for confirmation by rule-call vote.
One sec. There we go. Councillor Hathworth moves for confirmation by rule-call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank Dr. Heaps and Mr. Nagel for their willingness to serve.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Proznyuski.
Yes.
Councillor Mercilow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor McLean.
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Hathworth.
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez.
Yes.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
And Councillor Stott.
On the mayor's appointment of Dr. Charles Heaps, term to expire 1/14/2025, and Mr. Joshua Nagel, term to expire 2/11/2025, to the Bicycling and Shared Path Advisory Committee, 10 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, one absent. Matter carries. Councillor Hathworth.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to suspend the rules to allow Dr. Heaps and/or Mr. Nagel to speak if they so choose.
Councillor Hathworth moves for suspending of the rules, seeing no objection. Mr. Heaps, if you would like, or Dr. Heaps, if you would like to make your way to the podium, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. This is the first time I've been called doctor for a very long time. Thank you. I just want to say I'm really looking forward to contributing to the committee and to meeting its other members. I'm a keen but very casual cyclist, so I'm mainly interested in this because I'm a strong believer in the importance of helping cities promote non-motorized transport to help our cities become more livable and as part of a solution to the global climate crisis. I'm particularly interested in how to make cycling as safe and accessible as possible for our diverse communities and how to make it increasingly desirable as an everyday mode of transport that can substitute for polluting motorized vehicles. Just in terms of my background, I've been a Salem resident for 30 years now, and I'm a climate scientist working for an organization called the Stockholm Environment Institute, which is, which works on sort of climate change and related topics, so hopefully it's somewhat relevant to the committee. So thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel?
Hi, councillors. Appreciate you voting me in despite how much I've harassed you over email and read it to do things, so thank you for that. Just wanted to say that I'm hoping to work to make Salem a great place for micromobility. From personal reasons, my son is three years old. I'd like, as he grows up, to be able to get around the city safely, comfortably, and I want to make sure that the people of Salem can make the most out of alternative stickars to get around, to reduce traffic, to cut down on carbon emissions, to get their exercise in while doing their transportation, and I appreciate you voting for me. Thank you.
Thank you both for serving. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's reappointment of Helen Sides to the Planning Board with a term to expire June 28, 2028.
Councillor Mercilow.
Thank you, President. I move for confirmation by rule-call vote.
Councillor Mercilow moves for confirmation by rule-call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. Ms. Sides wanted to be here tonight, but she couldn't, and so she wanted me to send along a message. She said, "Good evening, City Council and all present. Thank you for your consideration to reappoint me to the Planning Board. I'm very proud to be a member of this board, working hard for the future of Salem, and I hope to continue to do so. Respectfully, Helen Sides." And I just want to jump in here and say that when I started on the council, I was the liaison to the Planning Board, and I did that purposefully, because I wanted to learn more about how projects get through the permitting process. And I'm always so impressed by the knowledge base on the Planning Board and the questions that they ask and how they challenge developers to build better projects, and Ms. Sides is a perfect example of that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Proznyuski.
Yes.
Councillor Mercilow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor McLean.
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Hathworth.
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez.
Yes.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
And Councillor Stott.
On the mayor's reappointment of Helen Sides to the Planning Board with a term to expire June 28, 2028, 10 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, one absent. Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor. Councillor Varela? No? Okay. Further communications from the mayor? Councillor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. I'd like to move that we take the agenda out of order to page 10.
Councillor Varela moves that we take the agenda out of order to page 10, which is motions, orders, and resolutions. Second?
Sir.
Seconded by Councillor McCarthy. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, President Stott. Order that the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs shall meet prior to the first regular meeting of the City Council in September 2023 for the purpose of drafting, with the assistance of the Solicitor, DEI Director, Purchasing Agent, and City Planner, a wage theft ordinance to be filed with the council for its first meeting in September. Wage theft, the improper withholding of payment from employees, impacts low-income immigrant and limited English proficient workers who are most vulnerable. The ordinance shall require city vendors to certify their compliance with federal and state wage laws, to report violations and provide a wage bond, and strengthen the city's ability to hire vendors that treat their employees fairly. It shall also prohibit city departments from contracting with debarred vendors and require their potential and current recipients of tax relief agreements and licenses issued under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 138 and Chapter 140 comply with applicable wage laws, and I move for adoption.
Councillor Cohen moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. I'll be brief. My intent as a councillor is not to represent everyone equally, and that's why I'm grateful to have teamed up with Councillor McLean to formulate an ordinance. We've spent quite a bit of time on it. If you're a business that plays by the rules, you're at a disadvantage. If we all go into a restaurant and someone in the waitstaff hustles and is nice to us as customers... as customers, we don't know if they've been paid their rightful amount. If we walk by a work site and carpenters are on break and they wave to us, we don't know if they've been paid or paid at all. So really appreciate the support from the council in helping to navigate this through, and thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel, and then Counselor McLean.
Thank you, President Stott. I just want to quickly thank Councilors McLean and Cohen for bringing this in, and our visitors for coming in and speaking tonight. The harm of wage theft, often targeting our most vulnerable workers, cannot be overstated, and I look forward to having further discussion in committee. Thank you all again.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, President Stott. I'm very proud to bring this forward with Counselor Cohen. I think this is an order that feels very personal for me as somebody who spent many, many years as an hourly wage shift worker and had to fight many times to get the pay that I felt like I deserved and really realized the value of my overtime and how difficult it was to make those ends meet. And I think it's just important, as we move forward in considering this, to bring home the idea that not only is it about creating a fair playing field for those who do business in Salem the right way, but it's an intensely personal conversation, I think, for a city like Salem, which has such a robust restaurant industry. In the last six months alone, there have been multiple restaurants in Salem who have found themselves in court proceedings or have found themselves penalized for wage violations. And so this is really about who we are as a community right here in Salem, not just in an esoteric way, but in a really specific way, and I'm looking forward to the conversation about how we can improve conditions for the workers here.
Counselor Mercillo, then Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, President. Just to clarify, should this be co-posted?
Yes, thank you. Can I amend this?
Counselor Cohen moves to amend that this be sent to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with Committee of the Whole. Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to echo some of the comments that my colleagues already made. Thanks everyone that publicly were explained that need to be addressed, having that part of the new Indians community. And I hear there are so many, many, many times in differing aspects, and I think that is very well that we address it, but it's what we do. So thank you so much once again, and I'm looking forward to the conversation to make sure that we draft something that really help at least alleviate the situation like we hear from some of the public comments. This might know so completely everything, but this is a beginning or something that needs to be addressed. So thank you so much.
Any further comments? Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. Thank you, Counselor Cohen and Counselor McLean for bringing this in. I have spent a lifetime in the food service industry and have been subject all my life to wage theft in the cities of Santa Barbara, New York City, and with my wife Holly in the cities of Salem, Danvers, and Peabody. This is a normal act and, you could say, business model of some of our businesses here, and something has to change. And like Mr. Yusuf said, it really comes down to not only the Attorney General holding these businesses accountable, but our city as well. So I think this is a complete benefit to our restaurant workers, who usually do not have a voice in this or legal representation when wages are taken. So thank you for bringing this in. I'm complete support for this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On Counselor Cohen's motion that this be sent to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to meet to discuss, or for the purpose of drafting a wage theft ordinance. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Varela, do you move to go back to page?
Thank you, President Stott. Move that we move back to page five on the agenda.
Counselor Varela moves that we go back to page five. Communications from the mayor.
We have ordered that the sum of $1,693,972.50 is hereby transferred to the accounts listed below as provided to cover remaining fiscal year 2023 costs necessary to close the fiscal year.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, President Stott, and move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor McLean moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counselor McLean?
I further move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you. This is a matter of covering some of the essentially costs that we didn't have the ability to pay for as they were budgeted as we close out the fiscal year, and there is some time sensitivity to this. We only have a short window in which we can use the funds from the oncoming fiscal year to pay for amounts from the prior fiscal year. A lot of the funds that are being transferred in this order are for the purpose of covering snow and ice removal. But you'll see as you work through a lot of these items that in some cases, in many cases, it is a matter of paying for items that were contracted out from a given department because it wasn't necessarily taken care of by the staff within a department, and that sort of speaks to some of the staffing challenges that we've had as a city. But most of this is appropriate, and it is time sensitive, so I am moving for adoption immediately.
Any further discussion? On Counselor McLean's motion for adoption of $1,693,972.50 transferred to the accounts as noted below to cover the remaining fiscal year 2023 costs. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have ordered that the sum of $15,000 is hereby appropriated within the capital outlay account for software upgrade costs and trail maintenance associated with the Heritage Trail Initiative.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, President Stott. I move to refer to the Administration and Finance Committee.
Counselor McLean moves to refer to the Administration and Finance Committee. Under discussion?
Thank you. A few of our councilors, Counselor Hapworth and Counselor Merkel, have been working diligently on this project. Folks may recall that we spent some money to create some upgrades for the Heritage Trail last year, did some repainting, created a website portal, sort of updated it, and so this is a continuation of that project. And so I'm going to invite Counselor Hapworth to sort of set the stage for what's going on now.
Any further discussion? Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. I think just first, I want to just thank Counselor Merkel for the work she's done with Destination Salem. I think it's very easy to take Destination Salem for granted because they've had such great leadership for so long, but they're incredibly vital to the city, and in that transition process, Counselor Merkel has made sure that they have what they need and has really done what we, this is the reason we have liaisons to these different groups. I just want to appreciate Counselor Merkel for that. And then this is just, this is, you know, Destination Salem has really sort of worked on the Heritage Trail to provide an experience for our tourists, and this is something that's being used. It's an online app, and we can talk about it more in committee. We don't need to take too much time on this right now, but it's an online app, and they're sort of moving to port it over to the Destination Salem app so that tourists can use it more in the coming season.
Any further discussion? On the motion that the matter of $15,000 be appropriated for software upgrade costs and trail maintenance associated with the Trail Heritage Initiative is referred to the Administration of Finance, Administration and Finance Committee? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have ordered to accept the in-kind donation from Salem Native Nursery in the amount of $1,705 for the treatment of certain trees against the ash borer infestation on North Street.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, President Stott. I guess I move for suspension of the rules.
You don't need to.
Okay. So I'll move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption. Let the record reflect that Counselor Varela has left. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Counselor Mercillo?
Just to clarify, because I was trying to catch up, are we voting on this tonight? With the motion for adoption?
Motion for adoption.
Right? Was that your?
Yes.
Okay. It's under discussion right now. Yes. Okay. So, thank you. I just want to jump in and say that Chris is a neighbor, and learning about trees and becoming the tree guy in Salem is a newfound passion for him in his semi-retirement, and he has been tracking this ash borer disease that's all over, and he's been trying to save the trees. It's kind of an expensive thing. You have to inject the trees with this, whatever, whatever it is they inject it with. And it's been shown to work. There's a lot of trees, especially down at Forest River, that have already been, they've died from this disease. It's pretty fast when it starts, and so this has kind of been his mission, and as well as the, this nursery, the Salem Native Nursery that he started, this is his other passion. And they, his yard is full of plants that he's been growing, and the Splain Park also has an area designated for his plants, and they've been selling them to people in and around Salem. And so I really kind of, I have to, I have to give a shout out for the work that he's done in his group to bring native plants and shrubs and trees back to Salem and kind of advocate for the use of native plants. And so, yeah, thank you, Chris.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I want to echo Counselor Mercillo's complimenting Chris Burke, who's an asset to the city in many ways. I've been on many tree tours with him. And just to reinforce, Forest River Park has lost almost 20 trees to this infection, and they literally, as soon as we identified that those trees had the ash bor, those trees were dead within, I think, like, three or four weeks at the most. And you have to literally inject the trees and then come back and do it again the following year. So the fact that, and I know Chris has been working with the Tree Commission to try to save more trees, not just the ones on North Street, but I just really wanted to echo what Counselor Mercillo said about Chris's dedication for our environment.
Any further discussion? I'd also like to echo the comments about the ash trees. I also met with Chris to review the trees. He met with me, and we talked about Furlong Park has, is being infested with these as well. I reached out to a few individual homeowners that he noted, but mostly because this is noting North Street, and he specifically said when we met, "It's not North Street in my ward, it's North Street closer to the Witch House, and there are three, maybe three or four maybe trees there that it's just a really difficult location for the trees to grow, and these trees are actually growing, but now there's an infestation, so we really want to focus on saving them." So I was just shocked to see that, well, not shocked, because I know how much Chris wants to save those trees, but very appreciative of the donation to put the effort in to save those trees. Very important. Any further discussion? On Counselor McLean's motion to accept the in-kind donation from Salem Native Nursery in the amount of $1,705 for the treatment of certain trees against the ash borer infestation on North Street? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have a resolution in support of access to counsel in eviction cases and eviction ceiling appeals to promote housing opportunity and mobility.
Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas...
Did he recuse himself? Okay, sorry. Just for the record, I want to note that Counselor Dominguez did recuse himself. Counselor Hapworth?
Whereas eviction case filings between January and June 2023 in housing courts statewide are surpassing the number of evictions filings pre-pandemic. Over 90% of tenants in the Commonwealth...
Do we have to waive the reading?
Thank you.
Counselor Mercillo moves to waive the reading, seeing no objection. Further, any further discussion?
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry, sorry. Do you have a motion on this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move for adoption by rule call vote.
Counselor Hapworth moves for adoption by rule call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Ms. Stewart and Ms. Riley for their testimony today. I think we learned a lot about it just through that testimony as well, but we've all seen this firsthand, especially those who have worked with the Housing Stability Services here in Salem. I've seen it firsthand in my neighborhood where some of the first neighbors that I met when I moved in were living in the two tenement houses on, the two boarding houses on Howard Street. We've seen a number of evictions there, and the access to counsel, I think, is something that is incredibly important to folks at every level, and the folks there certainly benefited from it. So just appreciate the mayor for bringing this forward and fully in support.
Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. I want to say that I'm really pleased to see this in front of the council, and eviction is terrifying. You not only lose your home, but experience loss of property, disruption, and chaos. You're left with a permanent eviction record that negatively impacts your ability to find a new place that won't even take a chance on you. And access to counsel in eviction proceedings can be a game changer. And I also see this as part of our commitment to address our housing crisis, to focus on keeping people in their homes, the housing stock we have, and creating new affordable housing. And I'm grateful to see this here in the council. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the motion for the resolution in support of access to counsel in eviction cases and eviction ceiling appeals to promote housing opportunity and mobility, the motion to adopt by rule call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Yes.
Counselor Mercillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
On the resolution in support of access to counsel in eviction cases and eviction ceiling appeals to promote housing opportunity and mobility, nine members voting, nine in the affirmative, one absent, two absent, matter carries. Mayor's informational page, we have none. Moving to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. City of Salem, July 13, 2023, order that the Committee on Community and Economic Development meet to discuss the creation of a zoning overlay relative to food trucks and temporary food vendors in the city of Salem, and I move that this be adopted.
Counselor Varela moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. So apologies, I will not be brief with this because I believe this topic needs some explanation. Let me start by saying that this conversation has happened before with little to no traction. In 2017, the Community on Economic Development Committee voted unanimously to create a separate ad hoc committee investigating the idea of food trucks in Salem. To my knowledge, that conversation never happened. Not everyone's a fan of food trucks or temporary food vendors. I get it. Many established restaurant industry players view food trucks as a competitive threat that are not subject to the same financial or regulatory burdens that they are. As evidence of this, they point to high startup fees and operational costs associated with running brick and mortar restaurants. In many cases, they have effectively lobbied cities and localities to create or even maintain restrictive parking or zoning ordinance that practice severely, to severely limit food truck operations. The major losers of these regulations are local entrepreneurs who face barriers to entry and consumers who now have less options to choose from. A study by the Institute for Justice analyzed 12 years of county-level consensus data to determine whether the increase of the number of food trucks corresponded with the decline of the number of brick and mortar restaurants. What researchers found was not only that there was no associated decline in the number of traditional restaurants, but an increase in the number of food trucks was strongly correlated with the restaurant growth across the period of the study from 2005 to 2016. The average county had 145 restaurants and just one food truck, yet both sectors grew substantially during this time. For instance, the number of restaurants per county grew from the average of 133 to 157, while the number of food trucks grew from less than .73 per county to 1.7 in 2016. Researchers also found evidence... Researchers also found evidence that the number of food trucks in one year had no statistically significant negative, negative relationship to the number of restaurants in the next. The study throws cold water on the idea that the rise of food trucks is detrimental to brick and mortar businesses. Instead, it presents a strong case of why cities and localities should do away with the protectionist policies that distort marketing signals to limit consumer choice. Such policies are inherently anti-competitive and discriminate against otherwise a perfectly legitimate business. Brick and mortars have nothing to fear from the healthy competition and should welcome the opportunity to expand offerings and provide new services such as outdoor dining options, which we're already working on, and strategies likewise. Cities and local governments should consider the possible benefits of what come, the rise of food, of the food truck industry. In addition to a potential new source of tax revenue, job creation, food trucks can serve as a major draw of people to urban areas, much in the same way businesses like microbreweries do. Food trucks are increasingly associated with a culture of several major cities. Like Austin and Portland, we can see the benefit of this and can contribute to the overall growth of public tourism, which we have a burgeoning tourism situation here in Salem. And personally, like many of our startup businesses, my business started off as an initiative from the Chamber of Commerce and Salem Main Streets. I'm one of many small businesses that have become viable operation by the allowance of a temporary food permit in the city of Salem. I hope that we can find the time and patience to find a reasonable solution of codifying an ordinance for temporary food vendors in our city. Over the next couple of months, I will be working with the planning department, health department, traffic and parking department, engineering, and the legal department to figure out the next steps of the draft related to this matter. And I hope that everyone will have an open mind when it comes to this conversation. Thank you for your time.
Any further discussion? On, oh, Counselor Varela?
I'm sorry, can I co-post that with the Committee of the Whole? Apologies.
Sure. On Counselor Varela's order that the Committee on Community and Economic Development co-post it with Committee of the Whole, meet to discuss the creation of a zoning overlay relative to food trucks and temporary food vendors in the city of Salem. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. In the year 2023, an ordinance relative to traffic be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Article 1 is hereby amended by repealing the following to Section 17A. Section 62, deposit of coins required to use parking spaces, unused time, $25, and replacing it with Section 62, deposit of coins required to use parking spaces, unused time, $25 fine, $75 fine during weekends in October. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Marsillo moves for adoption for first passage, under discussion?
Thank you, President. This is, this is more getting things ready for October and kind of changing the way we do fines for that month.
Any further discussion? On the motion that the ordinance relative to traffic be amended to add $75 fine during the weekends in October? For adoption for first passage? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam President. The year 2023, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zone, limited time is hereby amended to add, by adding the following. Lemon Street in front of Number 11 Lemon Street, running in westerly direction for a distance of 20 feet, handicap parking, limited time, tow zone. Section 2, the ordinance shall, shall take effect as provided by the city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Hapworth moves for adoption for first passage, under discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. This is just a request from Counselor Watson felt for a resident that needed the parking. Lemon Street is heavily, heavily used and there's limited off-street parking for this resident.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I did not confirm, but I'm assuming the backup from Lieutenant is, okay, awesome. On the motion for adoption for first passage to add an accessible spot in front of 11 Lemon Street? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. City of Salem, July 13, 2023, an ordinance relative to traffic be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Section 51 of the Article 5 be amended by inserting the following. Cedar Crest Avenue, parking prohibited on certain streets, easterly side, beginning at the intersection of Loring Avenue and running in a northerly direction, a distance of 52 feet, no parking. Section 2, an ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Varela moves for adoption for first passage, under discussion?
I'll be brief. Thank you, President Stott. You know, Cedar Crest Ave is a major intersection, intersection with Loring Avenue. We do have quite a few concerned neighbors about vehicles getting in and out of Cedar Crest Ave to Loring Avenue. Being that it's such a quick stretch, we feel like this is relevant and necessary. So thank you.
Any further discussion? I will note that Lieutenant Tucker's recommendation is also included in the backup documentation. On the motion for adoption for first passage, that Cedar Crest Avenue adds parking prohibited on certain streets? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Moving to committee reports. Counselor Proznyuski?
Thank you, President Stott. Following the report from the Committee on Government Services co-posted with the Committee of the Whole and the Board of Regist, Registars to whom it was referred, the matter of the whole move petition for a charter change relative to ranked choice voting has considered this matter and would recommend that it be kept in committee.
On acceptance of the report? All those in favor? Any opposed? Report is accepted on adoption of the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you. Last night, most of the members here of the council were at, at the presentation that was done by people who are proactive in promoting ranked choice voting. They gave a very in-depth educational piece on exactly how it works. I think everybody that attended the, the meeting kind of got the nuts and bolts of exactly how this works. But because of the, the amount of effort and the amount of work needed for this to be, to move forward, it, it, the matter was kept into, in committee until we hear back from the Board of Registars, which also, who also came and spoke and attended. And they will be meeting separately and making a recommendation and also that the, later on, some of the hurdles that needed to be discussed about this be kept in committee for a further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On adoption of the recommendation that the matter stays in committee? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter stays in committee. Petitions?
We have a request from the residents of Broad Street between Jackson Street and Dalton Parkway to hold the block party on September 9, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., with the rain date of September 10, 2023.
Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that this be granted.
Counselor Marsillo moves that this be granted, under discussion? Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. This is my block. This is our party. Y'all are invited. I know it's an election year and so please, please stop by. And yeah, that's, that's about it. Thank you.
I just put it in my calendar. Any further discussion? On the motion that the block party for Broad Street on September 9, 2023, between 2:00 and 8:00 is granted? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have the following license applications for limousine, taxi cabs, public guides, taxi operators, and vehicle for hire operators only.
Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counselor Marsillo moves that these be granted, under discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion that the license applications are granted? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished?
Petitions.
Petitions. Thank you.
We have the following license application for a taxi operator.
Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that this be denied.
Counselor Marsillo moves that this be denied? Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion that this license application be denied? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have six claims.
Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Marsillo moves that these claims be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Unfinished business.
We have the second passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic for October resident parking.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, President. I move for adoption for second and final passage.
Counselor McCarthy moves for adoption for second and final passage? Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion for second and final passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic in October resident parking? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have the second passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic for Lafayette Street.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I move this is adopted second passage.
Counselor Cohen moves that this is adopted for second and final passage, under discussion?
No discussion.
On Counselor Cohen's motion for second and final passage of an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to traffic for Lafayette Street? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further un, no. That's it. Anything further? Well, I hope you all enjoy your summer and stay cool. I'm sure we'll see you again this summer, though. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, President Stott. I move for adjournment.
Counselor McCarthy moves for adjournment? All those in favor? We are adjourned.